Call meeting order. Shelley, can you do a roll call, please?
District, thank you, Mr. Mayor. District one, Compton and Rio.
Here.
District two, Compton and South Shore.
There's this.
District three, Compton and Leatham, District two. District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Compton and Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Compton and Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Zemal.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Fernando, can you lead us in the invocation?
Yes, so an implication doesn't have to be a prayer. Traditionally, we do a prayer, but tonight, I'm gonna do a cult and then a prayer. So this is by Jack London, and he was a famous author, and he wrote Call of the Wild. This is a quote of his. "I'd rather be ashes than dust. I'd rather be that my spark should burn out in a brilliant blaze than it should be stifled by dry rock. I would rather be a superb meteor, every atom of me in magnificent glow, than a sleepily-permanent planet. The proper function of a man's life is to live, not to exist. I shall not waste my days in trying to prolong them; I shall use my time." Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you that we could be here. Help us to make the best decision we can for our community, and help us to all give our best in everything that you do and every day that you give us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Freddie can lead them to the place.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Start with summary of current events. Mike, we'll start with you down there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I really don't have anything to offer today.
Thank you, Mike. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. First of all, the Globe Miami game is this Friday, so tickets are already going on sale. So if you guys can get tickets, I really recommend going to that, which are usually rivalries, so you know your dream, so.
G looks good.
Yeah. No, it doesn't. GM looks good in Miami. So anyway, I highly recommend to go to that, it's a lot of fun. And then, second of all, we got the big Halloween trick or treat downtown on Monday. Thousands of kids will be down there. It's last, we had over 5,000 kids. So again, if you can participate, Mayor, it's awesome, and they'll all be down there handing out candy and stuff. If you can make it, fantastic. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Mariano?
Um, talked to a constituent today who was concerned about crime in her neighborhood, and delved into it a little further, and I think the best thing we can do is stand up and be counted. If you see something suspicious, call it in. There is a number that allows you to call in anonymously and report what you're seeing. It will be referred to, if you request it, to Globe PD or the Sheriff's Office. The number, uh, the name of the program is called We Tip. It's on the city's website. The number is 1-800-782-7463. That's 1-800-782-7463. You want to be proactive in your community, you have to stand up and defend it as well. Don't be afraid to make that call. If your name is not asked for, just provide the information, it'll be processed. 1-800-782-7463. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mariano. Fernando?
Uh, so this Saturday is the Ghost of Globe Tour, so if you've never done it, it's pretty fun. They do a bunch of ghost stories, and there's several different buildings, and I get to be one of the ghosts this year, so I will be doing a little tour of the Elf's Building, the one that's tall, the three-story building in the world. So, we don't go in, we just get to talk about it from there. But if you can make it, it starts at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything other than to say, uh, it's good to see a packed house today. I know that, uh, we're going to be recognizing quite a few, uh, city members, so personally, congratulations for, for all your efforts and your time spent with the city. And I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, one new staffer, just as I was walking in, so thank you for being here, and I know we have others, but I just want to say, uh, thank you for all your service, and for you newcomers, welcome to the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. I have a couple of things, uh, just tagging on to Ghost of Tour. Uh, that's an amazing event, it really is. They put a lot of work into it. I know, uh, many, many participants in there. Um, I think one of the key parts is the fire department driving the old truck and getting people back and forth. That's huge, so that's very important, been a tradition for a long, long time, so it's good to see that'll be happening again, uh, this time. Also, on the Fourth, First Friday, don't forget First Friday, uh, it's Globe's Giving, uh, recognizing our nonprofits, so please come and enjoy. They have a lot of things, uh, scheduled for that day, so come and enjoy it. And again, Halloween coming up, be careful in the neighborhoods, be careful downtown, we'll have a lot of kids out. And I just want to re- recognize, just raise your hand if you know our Citizens Academy, just so we can see who's here from the Citizens Academy. Thank you for attending, I know that's one of your assignments during the academy, and we welcome you to our meeting.
But they have to stay awake, don't they?
Yeah. And you can't, and you can't leave early.
They have to stay for the whole evening.
Whole thing, yeah.
And that's all I have, Paul.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, um, let's say, a lot going on, getting ready for the holidays, everybody's excited. Um, I just have one additional, um, notice of an event, um, coming up, um, October 26th, um, tomorrow night, a welding open house, uh, sponsored by Heel Community College, that's, uh, starts at 4:30 to 6:30, they have demos, and that's at the Miami Regional Training Center in Miami. And so if you, you want to, you know, support the program and, and see some cool stuff, uh, that's going on.
Is that the, uh, that's in Claypool in the Armory, the old Armory building? Is that, I believe so, yeah.
The actual address is 4053 East, um, UF 60, in Miami.
And, uh, some of the students will be doing welding demonstrations, uh, what they've learned, demonstrate their skills that they learned.
Well, so, very exciting, and council's invited. We got personal invitation, uh, to council if you'd all like to attend. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a first community to call the public. I have no, uh, request to speak cards, um, anybody online or on email? Nobody in the audience that wants to speak?
Take a quick look online, too. All right, see? Nope. Um, nope, nothing, never mind.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to special presentations and ceremonial matters, and item first up is City of Globe will recognize Anthony Martinez, Evidence Manager, for 10 years of service with the City of Globe. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Uh, if I could ask Anthony to join me down here?
Can you get out of it that fast?
No, you've gotta be in front, facing that way.
I was gonna face down.
Look at him. Good evening, everybody. Anthony's mom is in the audience, so I'm gonna do my very best to make him blush. Anthony started here long before I did. He started here in 2018, or 2012, I'm sorry. Uh, he was originally hired as a dispatcher. At that time, uh, the City of Globe Police Department had their own dispatch. After three years, he promoted to a record supervisor, uh, he transferred to, uh, as a, back to dispatch as a supervisor, and then in 2016, uh, he changed his roles and went into the evidence and property world. Uh, and then, um, throughout his time here, he's filled different roles as needed, uh, because his historical knowledge of the, of the department itself, the city, and he's just kind of a go-to guy. So that's all well and good, because that happened before my time. I started here in 2018, and there's some key factors that, that helped me be successful in the position that I have, and that's some of the people that were there. Beth is one of those. AJ, I was able to recruit a couple of old timers back, uh, Boyd and Chuck. The personnel here has been phenomenal, but none such as Anthony. Anthony's task was dire, to be honest with you. Uh, when I got here, our property room was in three different locations. Uh, one of them, they called the barn. Now, I used to punch cows for a living. I know what a barn is. That's not what I found when I found the property building. Uh, that was kind of a rat nest. Uh, they had never audited in the history of the police department, property and evidence, which is a tremendous liability. Um, so one of the first things that we did is we identified, uh, what needed to happen, finding space through the city, um, and then doing a complete property audit, and Anthony was in charge of that, and he had never done that before, but he never hesitated. He jumped right in with both feet. Him and Lieutenant Williams were tremendous, but that's just Anthony's attitude, and it's been his attitude since I've been here. It doesn't matter what I ask him to do, he's always the first one to raise his hand and jump in. He has been my personal assistant on three different occasions, because I keep losing them, um, and he's done a phenomenal job. He's managed records for us when Beth has been out on vacation. Uh, he's helped us out on crime scenes. We've sent him to, uh, training to be, uh, an evidence tech, not just a property custodian, but an evidence tech, and take pictures and stuff on major crime scenes. He is truly, truly a valued employee, and I can't thank him enough for all that he does. So happy 10 years. Thank you.
Now scoot over by the mayor. There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Next, we have the City of Globe will recognize Andrew Gatewood. Are we holding up? He's in, I just saw him. Yeah. We're okay to go? Can I move it? Okay. So we'll recognize Andrew Gatewood, firefighter medic for 10 years of service, and Chris Mills, engineer medic for five years of service with the City of Globe. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, um, to begin with, Andrew Gatewood was not able to make it this evening. He's currently working the, the shift on the ambulance and is otherwise committed to that. Um, with, with that said, we are, you know, we'll be recognizing at some point in the future, get him his 10-year award, um, or 10-year recognition for, for service to the city. Uh, Chris Mills, the, the, uh, the role that, that we took on and that we take on as, as EMS providers, um, within the city is, is a role that, you know, if you're not familiar with it, is about 80% of what occupies our time, uh, if not a little bit more. Um, we, we staff a total of nine paramedic positions. Those paramedics, you know, to, to get to where they're at, those paramedics, it's about a thousand hours of school, um, plus additional hours in, in learning and, and understanding the role that they play, understanding what, uh, what they have to do, and then the continuing education that goes with that is, is upwards of about 40 hours every year to make sure that we remain current and, and able to provide the best of care to, to the citizens of the community. Chris Mills is a, is currently assigned as an engineer paramedic, um, on a shift. In the, in the fire service, the role of engineer is, is the role that operates as our driver operator. It's their function to make sure that every day that they're on shift, the, the equipment, not only that they drive to, uh, to the scenes, but that we operate on the scenes. It's functional, it's doing what it's supposed to do, and it is ready to go. Chris started in, in 2017, and then in 2019, uh, we created, um, the first, the first engineer positions within the City of Globe Fire Department. This is, this is a crucial thing, because we do operate, we operate large equipment, we operate equipment that has a, a high value, and it's important that we make sure we take care of that. Um, Chris has taken on that role extremely well. In addition, Chris brought in a lot of EMS experience, uh, into the department, uh, not only as a, a paramedic, but also as a flight paramedic. Um, with that, he, he readily took on the role to manage all of our EMS, um, all of our EMS supplies, to make sure we have what we need on the truck, as well as, um, as well as training for our personnel, to keep, keep personnel, uh, ready and prepared to provide the service that they need. And I'll invite Chris to come up, since I didn't do that when I should have. Chris has continued to, to be a valuable, uh, a valuable member of the department. Um, we recently sent him to, to, uh, Drivers Instructor School, so that as we, as we work and, and move and promote other individuals to engineers, we'll have the ability to in-house make sure that they're up to speed, not only on, on the maintenance aspects, on the equipment aspects, but making sure that they're, they're competent in, in the operation of the vehicles that we, that we put on the road. Chris has, Chris has excelled at whatever he's done, uh, and on top of that, he's a great fisherman, so, um, we're, we're extremely glad to have Chris and, and to, uh, to be able to have him in, in the role that, that he's taken on.
Congratulations, Chris. So next, the City of Globe will recognize Uriel Perez, Assistant Streets Facility Supervisor for 10 years of service, Ed Johnson, Public Works Lead Maintenance for 10 years of service, and Vincent Mariscal, Water, Wastewater Facility Supervisor for five years of service with the City of Globe. We have John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you, not just to celebrate Public Works, but Police and Fires, you already, uh, saw the presentation on that. Um, first of all, I'd like to, um, introduce to you, of course, if you don't already know him, he comes up regularly to ask for funding or money source, Vincent Mariscal. In his five years with the City of Globe, it's been kind of a whirlwind, not just for him, but for us, as far as training and, uh, movement, and, uh, when we talk about, uh, succession planning and, uh, retention, you know, this is one of those positive efforts that we make forward and get our employees trained, and, uh, they're making that positive effort where they get rewarded for it, and this is one of those examples, so thank you. Vincent started with us five years ago, August, um, just hit his five-year mark. Um, in that time, it's actually, I think he's probably held a, a different position every year, uh, with us, and moved around from a technician to a supervisor now. Um, also, in those five years, he's made a great, uh, effort to extend his knowledge. He recently completed the second phase of a public work training where it enhances management training, customer service, uh, himself, and Richard Thomas have gone through the first two phases of that, and that actually does benefit all of us and our employees as well, uh, for the management part. Uh, he's also just recently, and within the last month, completed his wastewater, uh, treatment, yeah, uh, level one. Uh, previously, in the last two years, he actually did his water, um, one and two certifications. So he's definitely on the right track when we talking about succession planning and training, not just for himself, but for the City of Globe, because as we know, uh, with the staffing that changes we've had in the last five years, Vincent's been a definite, definite part of that, significant and the most positive, you know, in my time with the City of Globe, I often remind him, this has been literally the fastest movement I've seen an employee that can make in his time here, and that's a good thing. Um, I just want to take the time that, you know, uh, on the day-to-day, uh, setting assignments, I mean, last night alone, he was out with the crew working on a water break until 8:30, you know, and that extends his hours, his time, but also is supporting the employees and making sure that the job is done at the end of the day. So I just want to extend my sincerest thank you, uh, not just on my part, but on some of the, on the coworkers, and, um, I think he's got a great start, and I hope for many years to come, um, and thank you for your five years. Click on TikTok.
Thank you, Vincent. Thank you, John.
Mayor and Council, unfortunately, I could not, uh, the other two employees that were actually listed, Uriel Perez and Ed Johnston, could not make it. Um, I would just take a moment to, uh, thank them both, and, uh, you know, when, recently with, with all the rains, or storms, or flooding, um, you know, when we have a caliber of employee such as these two, and unfortunately, like I said, they can't be here. Uriel Perez is one of the main employees that you see out there after every storm and cleanup. Recently, I was credited in the newspaper and social media for standing out there knee-deep in water. It's with these types of employees that I can make a phone call when people ask, where's his help? They were my help, they were on their way. That's why I can set forward and start these projects, because I know they're right around the corner. That's my competence. That's my, you know, my, that, we, we worked to build the great team, and I think we have the, you know, the, the stone, the stones, setting stones now to actually where we're at, was Vincent with Uriel, and, uh, he, most recently, one of the projects that actually he spearheaded was, you saw his picture in the paper, was the stair project, the stairs on the project, was the first league of the steps with the Pasco stairs. He was the one that actually was pushing that project with the employees and leading that team. Uh, so that's a result of his work there. Uh, the other with Ed Johnston, you know, when we talk 10 years of service, uh, not only is the dedication there with an employee for 10 years of service, uh, many don't know that he lives in Superior. So he's gone through the fire, fire, you know, street highway closures, who he's gone through the bridge project closures, you know, waking up every day and, and getting here to work, driving through rage just to be here. Uh, that shows a significant amount of dedication for any employee to be able to do that. So he's been doing that for the last 10 years, continues to do that, and, uh, working, uh, First Fridays, special events, both of these employees. I just wanted to put that out there, uh, just so you're aware of it, and you will see them. You know, fortunately, some of you may know them, they do the First Fridays, they're out there, and like I said, a lot of the times when we get credit, when you acknowledge our department, it's for these types of caliber employees that are out there, and also the retention's just great that we're, I look forward, this is a great team we have. So, that's all I have, Mayor. I'll make sure to get them. Um, Mayor, if I may step out of the box, just in closing, um, I wanted to extend a, a thank you on the City Globe Public Works side, uh, to an employee that actually's not worked, that didn't work for the City Globe, but he just retired this last week, and, uh, Ruben Casillas worked for the County Public Works Department. He just retired, and he, he actually completed his 48 years, um, so that, you know, says a lot, and I, I openly say that, and I want to congratulate him on our part, because not only did he serve Heel County, he served the City of Globe, because we have a lot of overlap in storm cleanup or emergencies, and I just wanted to acknowledge that for him and thank him for it. Happy day.
Happy day. Next, we'll have, uh, Chief Dale Walters will present his four-year prod, report to the Globe Council.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Danny, is there a clicker up here, or are you gonna do it? I will try to make this as brief as possible. Vice Mayor Stapleton said I only had 55 minutes, so I'll try to...
Vice Mayor Stapleton said I only had 55 minutes, so I'll try to, I'll try to go, I'll try to go as quickly as I can. So every year, last year was the exception, since I've been here, this is the fourth year, I just completed my fourth year with the City of Globe. Last year with COVID and all, everything that was going on in the world, we didn't do a review, so we're going to be covering two years. There's going to be a little bit of overlap to explain some of the categories, because they kind of blended in over the last four years. So we've accomplished a lot as we go through all this. But one of the key things is, these are the assessment categories that we really focus in on, and these were established specifically by City Council, and they were developed from the Public Safety Strategy Group review that this body, not necessarily everybody here, but members that are here, were part of the group that hired this company to come in and do a review in 2015 of the police department. And they wrote a very detailed report, but the categories they looked at was Globe PD Personnel, Facilities, Equipment and Fleet, Department Audits and Case Management, Career Development and Training, Community Engagement and Community Policing, Internal and External Partnerships, Grants, Policies and Procedures, and Department Morale. Now, when I started here, morale was a huge thing and a big concern with Council, and I think we've addressed a lot of these issues as we go forward. If at any time anybody on Council has some questions, just stop me and, and I'll, I'll answer them then. The Globe PD Personnel, during the time period 2021 and 2022, we lost five sworn officers that left the department. Three of them, two of them returned, one of them was terminated, and two of them went on to bigger agencies for career enhancement. During that same time period, we hired nine back. So we've been growing since I've been here. So Council is aware, when I got here, our cap for sworn personnel was 19, we currently sit at 28. The goal is about 32 to 34. And the first section that we really had to beef up was criminal investigations. We went from one incredibly overworked detective to now we have five, two of which are in Task Force, one with DPS Gettum, and one with, that will start next month with the county's Haida Group Narcotics Task Force. During the same time period, we have, we lost one civilian employee, was replaced with Daniel, Daniel Madden. And in, and during this time period, we also hired Shelley Sorka Spence, who's sitting in the back. We'd started the Advocacy Center just before, at the end of the last review period, and we found out really quickly, we needed to have a director over it, and Shelley was working with us for a number of years as our forensic interviewer, and she's a trained advocate, and she was a perfect fit for us, and so she jumped ship and came to work for us. The other, the other issue that we, if you look at it, and the amount of personnel that we have, we were looking at 200% overturn for the years prior to me getting here. Since I've been here, we've lost four people due to them going to bigger agencies, and it's going to happen, and we know it's going to happen. But we have had a focal point on hiring locals as much as we can, get them tied into the community that has something else to keep them here other than just a job, and it's worked out extremely well. Council's well aware that our facilities have been a big subject to be addressed. This Council just authorized the purchase of our property room last Council meeting, so we're moving forward with that. We moved into that building three years ago, it's an excellent utilization for that, and you've made it permanent for us, so we don't have to worry about moving, it works out really well. The police main station, for those of you that are unfamiliar, the original building in that L shape across the street was the Fire Department. The original Fire Department was built in sometime in the 1800s. The addition to the Fire Department between this corner building and the original Fire Department, I think was built in 1904 or '05. And then the Police Department was built in the late 40s to early 50s. It actually has a bomb shelter in it, it's kind of cool, and was the city jail and the court and city hall for a while, if I, if I know my history right. And then in 1976, they connected the two with the brick building there. So when I got up here, there was a big talk about a fire and police building, but reality for my world, I wanted that building. So we, so we went ahead and started the remodel project, and we did it in three different phases. So the first phase that we did, we did the administration area and records and the sergeant's office. And I'm going to click through a couple of, real quick to get to it. So this is my office, the before, actually during construction and after. This is the commander's office before he decorated it. This is the executive assistance office that sits in between. And then this is the records area and the sergeant's area, and this is the sergeant's area now. So that was the first phase that we did. So we jumped into the second phase, and then in negotiation with Paul, and the support from Paul, we really combined Phase Two and Phase Three into one process, and really it improved a lot, because we actually had Jerry helping it out. So cops as project managers on this is not a really good idea to say. So, but one of the things that we did in Public Works, John and all his guys were, actually did all this for us, we remodeled the building that we purchased for property evidence, and that's the inside of the evidence processing area. You can't see the rest of it, but that's the main area that the officers go in and process evidence as they move forward. So the second phase and third phase were actually tied together in that we redid the break room slash kitchen for the officers, the squad room, the sergeant's area, we cleaned up again and added some stuff to it, the booking room. We actually have an interview room that has cameras, microphones, that you can monitor from anywhere in the police department, thanks to Danny helping us out with the technology stuff. And then in the bomb shelter, the basement, you know, fallout shelter, we turned that into a locker room, and so we're about 98% complete with this project, and we redid the downstairs restroom. So this is the interview room here, you can still see some wires hanging out, but it's a modern interview room. It has everything any modern police department in the state would have. This is our processing room, like I said, we had to rearrange some stuff, because we are very limited on space, but that, that and a couple of other things will be completed by the end of the year. This is actually complete, we completely redid this. Originally, it was the women's shower for the women's cell, and so we had to do a bunch of plumbing in that. Public Works was excellent, Earth Works did a lot of workforce, and then Ryan Screw, and he's not here anymore, but did the contracting on all this. This is the downstairs, we've got to reconfigure this, but those are the new lockers for the troops, they're excellent, quality lockers, purchased through ACI, so the state inmates built these ports and all of our furniture for us. And then this is the officer's debrief room upstairs. We're going to have to cut that meeting table down a little bit, it's a little tight in there, but we try to utilize everything as much as we can. This is our kitchen and break room. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with drunk tanks, but that's what that used to be. And the bars are still up, as you saw in the, in the previous, on the left there. And I just want to point out that this was not on the job description when I took this So this is small town, this is small community, and every one of my, the men and women of the police department, and in fact, everywhere across the, the city, the city employees, they've dropped everything to make sure that we're able to get this done. And they've worked extra hours, they've done things that's maybe not in their job classification, but everybody was kind of put into together. The Copper Hills Family Advocacy Center opened up in 2020. It's the first one brick-and-mortar building in the county to help victims of crime. Because of the business that we were getting and the need to help support that, we were able to hire through some grant funding and the help of Paul and City Council, Shelley, and they've done a phenomenal job. We actually have some advertisement shirts that we provided all the council tonight to get the word out. And then over the last several years, the last two years, we've been working hard to get grants, and not just for us, some of this grant funding that you see up here was actually to benefit all first responders in the region. So the Department of Homeland Security Grant, the ERAC that I sit on, we were able to work with the county and get grants for them and dispatch for 800 megahertz radio system. We got it awarded to us last year to the police department, we'll be implementing them, they're getting programmed now. And then this year, we got the Fire Department to include Tri-City and the money for Miami PD to get them on the same system. So all first responders up here by this time next year should be up and running on an 800 megahertz system. And we did it for a fraction of the cost of what it would cost to actually build it out. So it's just kind of thinking outside the box. So the grant total for the grants right now is, is just under 800,000 since I've been So some of the stuff that we're looking at when we go through this is, we've talked about the facilities, we talked about property and evidence. One of the major accomplishments, I mentioned earlier, was the ending of the audit of property and evidence, which is incredibly huge. The other thing is some of the equipment and stuff that we were buying. Last time I reported this, we talked about the helmets and the shields and some of the weaponry and stuff like that. This time, we've added more vehicles, we've added more technology in the vehicles with tracks, so we can swipe a card, they can print out tickets and traffic accident forms in the car, out on the road. We're adding more this year, we're reaching out to GOHS for grant money to outfit some of the older cars that don't have it, we've been very successful with them. And then the less lethal and more patrol rifles have already been ordered for this year through the partnership with the League of Cities, we were going to get the Bolo wraps and deploy this year. A couple of years ago, we got the Bodymore cameras, upgraded our TASER systems, and we're looking at some training mechanisms now. We just ordered LPRs, license plate readers, this year through CIP funding, and then we're looking at additional radios and additional computers in the cars as we move forward this year, that were awarded through Council. This is a small community, but we have major incidents like every community does. In, in the four years I've been here, we've had a mass shooting, we've had six fatal accidents within the city limits of, of Globe. We've investigated homicides outside the city limits to assist the other departments. Recently, some of you have commented on the frequency of armored personnel carriers that are deploying for search warrants and stuff. We've been making an aggressive stance on dealing with drug investigations and drug crimes and trying to address those. In addition to that, we've put things in place to help us with some of our traffic issues. If you're from the valley, you don't understand it until you get up here and drive it, but the hills and the corners up here, people aren't trying to speed, it's just a natural thing, they're picking speed up. That's between speed and inattention, we've had some horrific accidents up here. The speed signs have helped a lot, we're looking at grant funding to get more this year. I just came back from a conference where we looked at some vendors, and they have some different technology that we're going to try to deploy for the following years. But the one thing that you cannot minimize, or you cannot overlook, is the increase of staffing. Staffing itself has made a tremendous impact on what we do, how we do, and the results thereof. So starting up here with being authorized 19, and I think I, by the time I was done with my first four months, I think I got us down to eight. We actually had to contract with the county. Since that time, we've been doing nothing but build, and we've improved the training mechanisms for these young men and women, we've improved their equipment, their support, and their focal points, and they've been going out there and aggressively getting after it. And because of that, some of the crime statistics that you're going to be seeing here in a minute, if I go the right way. Burglaries, you see a marked improvement over the last several years. That is from added officers out on the road, better trained officers on the road, and better investigations, where we're actually prosecuting people for those crimes. Public intoxication, one of the big things that, when I got here, that was a big issue. We actually had someone say there wasn't much we can do about it, there's a lot that we can do about it. We've cut it by two-thirds, or better, three-quarters. Shots filed directly related to gang activity and behavior, we've cut it down to 15 reported in 2022 as opposed to 55 in 2019. Traffic stops, I'm not sure what they were doing in 2021, but they've stepped it back up again, we've increased. If you go back farther from 2017, it even gets lower. That makes a significant impact on the traffic flow within the community. Domestic disturbances are down. So we're down kind of across the board on crime. So personnel are huge, fighting crime is huge, the facilities were great, but one of the biggest and most positive things that we've been doing as of the last four years is the community engagement. You've seen us out there on every special events in force, you've seen us engage in First Friday, the men and women of the Globe Police Department taking upon themselves to get involved with raising funds for at-need, at-risk families for Christmas and the holidays, they're constantly out there. And then partnerships within the region. Since I've been here, we've created partnerships with San Carlos, we actually have the first IGA with them, Cooperative IGA, we partnered with DPS with a position over at Gettum, we partnered with the county with a position over there, and on a number of things with the county, specifically for grant funding and different projects that we're doing. But one of the big partnerships that we've had, that we've been really able to reap the benefit of it, I'd like to celebrate a little bit with you tonight, it's actually with the posse of the Hila County Sheriff's Department, so if the posse members can come down for a minute.
So with the department our size, it's fairly difficult to staff all of the special events that we have going on a continuous basis, and we really couldn't do it without the posse. They staff a number of events for us each month, and we rely on them heavily. And so their command is here tonight to be recognized for, for the efforts that they put in. And there are Carol Gunther, Vic Power, Jimmy Tarango, and Guy Peterson. I appreciate all that you guys do and continue to, to provide assistance to us. So one of the things that we've done is, the city is donating a $5,000 check to the posse, it's a nonprofit organization, with the amount of time and energy that you guys dedicate to all the different special events that we do. I don't think there's a single special event that we've had in the last four years that I've been here that you guys were not a part of. And it's a huge benefit, it, it benefits the community, it, it helps us out, but it's true service that you provide to our community, and we just wanted to say thank you. So this check will, this particular one is for the photo that we're about ready to take, but the real one, you guys can come down at your leisure and pick it up, and they'll have it ready for you here when you're ready for it. But thank you very much for a link. If the mayor and council would like to come down and get in a photo with these men and women?
Promise I'm going to wrap it up. So the last thing I want to say is kind of what the plan is as we move forward. Right now, we have not been staffed at the level we've staffed at currently since about 2001, 2004, sometime in that time period. We'd like to get back to the staffing level of 1998, and that's kind of the goal, about 32, 34. We know it's a slow process, we've had tremendous support from this council, but that's the direction that we're heading as we move forward. The other thing is, is the continuation of partnerships. Since I've been up here, we have created partnerships with every law enforcement entity in the county. We started a Chiefs Association, any law enforcement leader within this county and some outside the county elects up here because we actually serve their population on a continuous basis because we're closer, they're part of that. And we keep developing these partnerships and stuff as we go. There's always going to be things for us to do to keep moving forward because that's just how we should be doing it to stay relevant in the things that we do. But I would ask you this. As we move forward, my recommendation to council and the city manager is in next year's budget, we create the funding to support having Public Safety Strategies Group, a company that this body had hired to do the initial assessment, come back and reassess us to see the improvements. We've been told before these things are done, and they were not. I would like to see where we're at, and then what else that we can do as we move forward to truly evaluate, have we accomplished the things that we said that we're going to? And that way, you see it from an independent third party and not just for me. But other than that, I want to say thank you for me and the minimum women of the Globe Police Department for the continued support from this body and this city management, and you're the reason that we're able to be as successful as we are. So thank you very much, good night.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, do you have any questions still?
Go ahead, Fernando.
I actually do have a question, chief, real quick. I know that you're partnering with GCC, the Community College, trying to get them trained for like the Arizona Post locally. I was just curious as to how that's going, and I know that we're working on a gun range.
So currently, right now, one of the challenges that we have for recruitment is we can't compete with the agencies down the valley. And so we not just want recruitment, but we want retention also. And so when I started evaluating the law enforcement groups within the region, when I started identifying the people like Boyd and Chuck and AJ and Mike Johnson from the county and stuff, they all had one thing in common, other than living here, is that first I thought they were all vandals, but then Mike threw that off. They all had the same thing in common, they went to that academy up here. It made them easier to live up here and to go to that, and they just maintained, they have something else, they have history here. Some of these families have been here for multiple, multiple generations. So we've changed our strategy a little bit to try to develop something that we can do here. So we partnered with the college last year, and we actually worked with them to help hire Lee Kennard as a director of the academy. But the college doesn't control academies, Arizona Post does. The college can control their faculty and stuff, but they have to meet Arizona Post standards. So when Arizona Post got involved, we identified that there are certain things that we had to fix to be able to meet that. And so right now, we're working on the range, we have some issues with the range, but we don't own the range. So that's the second issue that we have. So they came up this week to do an evaluation of it. We went out to the NRA range out in Weekbuilds, and they evaluated that too. I'll get a report back in the next day or two. One of the goals when I went to the conference in Dallas this year was to meet with range vendors, and I did, and I met with two different ones, and they're going to be coming out here, they'll look at the recommendations proposed, and they'll come out and do their own assessment and evaluation of the range, and then we'll go from there. We're looking at the short-term strategy of fixing what we have, but the reality of it is, is that's not going to be a long-term solution. So we have to come out with another long-term solution. So we're looking at all of that, what that looks like at the end of the day, I don't know yet, councilman, but we are looking at it. And we partnered with the county, we partnered with the college, I mean, we're trying to move forward with it, but we're not sure where it's going to take us yet. Council, have you had a question, your comments?
Ready, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you know, I just, we've talked many times since you've been the chief police here, and I just keep commending you and your staff in all aspects of what you have brought in the last four years. I was on this council when we were under a real stressful time with public perception, response times, just overall policing, and all the necessary law enforcement attributes that are needed for our citizens. And I'm just in awe now of just in four years, what you and your staff and your team have brought to this community. You know, I believe it's a fundamental responsibility of a mayor and council to make sure that its citizens, the taxpaying citizens, and those people that come through town to visit have the best law enforcement, fire departments, public works. It is a fundamental responsibility to provide quality of life at its finest. And I just, you know, this is your moment right now. I know that police and public works have theirs, but I really want to publicly commend you for all the, just from the building to the morale, to bringing our police force up to almost full staff, bringing on those ex-cops that were here that left, and they see that the culture has changed and they want to be part of it. That is just, it's so meaningful, and I want the public to know this, that there's a lot of work that goes behind this, and when you build a culture that wants to come back and be part of it, and be part of their own community, you just can't, you can't get any better than that. So congratulations, and just keep it going, you're doing a fabulous, fabulous job. Thank you, councilman. Thank you.
Chief, I want to thank you also just for your leadership, we've seen it through the years, we knew, we know where we were back in 2016, where we were, we needed to improve the department, and we've seen the continuous improvement since 2018 and everything that you guys do, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. One last thing before I go, I would like to really thank the men and women of the Globe Police Department that are in the audience, because I can take a lot of credit for some stuff, but the reality of it is, I learned a long time ago, if you surround yourself with extremely quality people, you'll be successful. And I've been fortunate enough to be able to be surrounded by very quality people. The dedication in this room for those men and women is just outstanding, I'll put them up against anybody. Starting with Anthony tonight, he's just phenomenal, AJ Casnetta, Chuck, Boyd, Devin, the lady of the river, Sergeant Valenzuela, the list goes on and on and on. The new men and women that are there are picking up the mantle because they're following the examples that are laid out by those men and women before them. And when I've got rookie cops that are volunteering to raise funding or to go out and seek grants to help feed the needy or provide presents for kids at Christmas and stuff, and they did that without prompting, they did that on their own. Why? Because that's what the standard has been set for. And so that speaks volumes of them, and they were here long before me, particularly the lady of the river.
Long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, we'll have a presentation of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 financial audit presented by Colby and Powell PLC.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to clarify, you know, this is the 2020, 2021 audit that was conducted in the second half of 2021 and 2022 that we just completed. So there's a split year, but the audit is of the year 2020 to 2021.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Scott Graff, I'm the auditor that performed the audit for the city. We're with Colby and Powell PLC, we're CPA firm in Gilbert, we've done the audit for the last, I was thinking about four years, this might be our fifth actually, but we've been getting to know the city of Globe over the years, seeing some things over the years, it kind of helps you, the perspective when you do the audit. Again, it's great to be able to be part of so many great, wonderful presentations, you know, I know the audit is not what everybody actually came for, I could tell when everybody left, but it's great to hear from our public safety, and I thought maybe I'd get home a little faster if they were all here, but it looks like they'll be out protecting me, so that's great. We all grew up playing cops and robbers, I don't know how I ended up being an auditor later on, but the bravery of a public safety police officer and a firefighter is incredible, and they're heroes, and I'm glad they were able to be recognized at least partially today. So let's move on to the City of Globe Audit Presentation. As was indicated before, this is for the fiscal year that ends in '21, so June 30, 2021. So as we talk about this presentation, it relates to that fiscal year. Obviously, we're much further along currently than that fiscal year, so there might be some questions that might not be available to you through this audit report. However, let's go ahead and dive into it a little bit. How does this move forward with these? Here we go. All right, so what you should have in your packet is a copy of the complete audited financial statement. In addition, we've also provided examination on an expenditure limitation report, which is required by the state each year. And also, you should have received a letter to council, audit requirement, you should receive that every year. We'll go over some of each of this, maybe not anything about the expenditure limitation report unless you have any question. Are you moving the slide, or am I moving it? Not familiar with it. Do I get the wrong one? Yeah?
Okay, good, then, I don't know.
Okay. So today, what you're going to find is, there's four main parts of this audit report. There's first, the independent auditor's report, and it's on page one. When you look at this auditor's report, this is really what you pay for, this is, what are the results, right? It describes responsibilities, it describes both responsibilities for the city management, but it also describes the auditor's responsibility, so everybody's clear. In fact, if you were to read through that report, it would say that the management is responsible to prepare a financial statement. So they're required to prepare a financial statement that can be audited, it is inclusive of all, everything you see after that report is the financial statement, including the footnotes. They're required to make sure those, that there's policies and procedures in place to be able to issue a good financial statement that's free of what we call material misstatements, whether those misstatements in your financial statements are caused by just an error or fraud. So that's the responsibility of the city. What is the auditor's responsibility? My responsibility is to provide an opinion on your financial statements, basically to tell people, hey, what the city says that those financial statements are, they are, they're true and correct. So our responsibility is to plan and perform procedures to obtain a reasonable assurance. Reasonable assurance in the accounting profession means a high-level assurance, that your financial statements are, like you said, they were, free of material misstatements, whether they're caused by error or fraud. And so that's our responsibility. So we do, basically, we do risk assessments, we achieve our audit testing requirements based on a study of your internal controls, your policies, we determine what might be a higher-risk area. Obviously, it'd be very costly if we had to test every single transaction. So we do a series of sampling and testing to provide an opinion. And our opinion on these financial statements, the audit opinion, indicates that your financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, these are the words, that it's basically a clean opinion, they present fairly. Absolutely, anytime you have a question, just stop me.
So I work in insurance, I know what material means in insurance, but I'm not sure exactly what it means in accounting.
Okay, that's a very good question. A material misstatement, materiality is a word that's used in accounting and auditing. Materiality is basically, is it big enough? Is a misstatement, if it's material, it's big enough that somebody would care about it. If you're a user of the financial statement, it's big enough that somebody would care about it. How do you quantify what a materiality is? Well, in auditing, we have two things, we have a way to quantify it by magnitude of total dollar amounts, total revenues, total assets, and we can quantify it in a way, in a dollar amount, but it's more than that. It also is quantified separately, because what's maybe material to some people is not material to others, okay? Our responsibility, by the way, when it comes to fraud, is that we, our responsibility is to prepare and plan a procedures to discover any fraud that's material. But if there's an immaterial fraud, and we come up and we find notice of an immaterial fraud, we do have a responsibility to report that to the appropriate level of management. Sometimes that would be city council, if that's the appropriate level. So the good news is, we didn't not find any fraud through our audit that would be reported to city council or management, so that's the good news. So, does that answer your question? Okay. For example, you know, 12 paper clips come up missing, would I have to present that to you? No, you wouldn't care, you know, but there would be other things that would be very material. So, the, when we open up your financial statements, the very next section is the management discussion and analysis, starts on page four. If you have no time but to read this, I suggest this is what you read. It's supposed to be like an overview, management's overview of the financial statement, it's an easier read, easier read than actually the financial statements themselves, but they support the financial statement. So this is prepared by your management, it's a summary, easy-to-read analysis of your financial statement overview. The next section is the financial statements themselves, you'll see pages 16, our government-wide financial statements, these are all required, different types of financial statements, fund financial statements, and the notes. Obviously, the notes are the greater portion, they'll have a lot of pages in the notes. And then the very, the fourth section on page 92, this is an auditor's report. This is an auditor's report, another auditor's report. Yeah, are you doing the slide? Okay, I'm thinking I'm doing something, and I'm actually not. Very good. I'm like, I'm getting good at this finally. But on page 92 is another auditor's report, and you'll notice it has my letterhead at the top. This is another required- This is another required report because as we prepare and perform our procedures, we actually look at your internal controls for the purpose of creating our, our procedures. If we find areas in your, your internal controls, which are your, your policies, your procedures, then, then we are required to put, if we find mistake, I'm sorry, material weaknesses or deficiencies in those, we would report that in this letter. So if we move to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the items that were found to be weaknesses in your internal controls, policies, procedures. But typically, these two typically relate to, to the city's compliance with laws, rules, and regulations. The first one is found at item 2021, and it's just the timeliness of the audit report, of the audited financial statements. The Arizona State Statute requires that the, the audit be completed by March 31st. That's a nine-month period after year-end, and it wasn't completed during that time period. So that, that violates that, that revised statute, therefore, it is a finding for this report. The second item, and, and we'll go back and answer any questions you have on any of these. So, so, but let me move on to the second item, which is the second of our two findings. And it requires, state statutes require that when you budget, that you don't go over budget by the department level. And department level, there, police, magistrate, fleet maintenance, these, these five departments showing a budget amount that, I'm sorry, their actual expenditures exceeded their departmental budget. Are you over in total on your general fund budget? No, it's just by the department. So there's areas for improvement. Typically, you'll have, if you'll notice on your budget, you'll have a, a contingency budget line item. And this is where, as you get to the point where you notice that you're going to be over budget, it's presented to council, a budget transfer would be approved, moving contingency line budget to maybe police or administration to make sure you're, you're covering your budget by department.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, after the presentation, I wanted to give a quick breakdown of, of what those amounts were and a little background on that. So let's, let Scott finish.
Right, and if you, if, I'm going to just pull up a page number because I don't see it up there.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, page seventy-four, you'll see the general fund budget, and it will show you comparisons of the actual spending amount by department and the budget amount by department. And you'll be able to see the variances for those departments. Like I said, you're, you're within budget on total expenditures by $1.9 million. It's just not in budget on certain departments. So that's an area for improvement, hopefully, next year when we do the audit. I guess next year being this year, we do the audit, that that should be improved. Any questions? That's all I thought I'd be presenting tonight. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Yeah, any consequences or what is the procedure if you're, if you don't meet the deadline nine months after you're done? Is there, it's just reported in the report?
Right, you know, and that's, that's an excellent question. I've been doing this for 23 years, and it's not the only time a city or town has ever been delayed in, in providing the report. I hate to say that it's just, I have never seen the state make any action against a city or town. I think they just, you know, they'll, they'll have the auditor general involved, which will try to, you know, push the situation a little bit, but I've never seen a city or town be fined or any, any consequence.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Scott, we, we file paperwork prior to missing that deadline. We submit to, I think, auditor general and let them know that we're going to be late. So, so there, it's, it's not like they're looking for it. They're, they're notified.
They're notified.
But we are late, and, and Scott has to report that.
Areas to improve. Any other questions? Paul, did you want me to talk anything about financial numbers?
We had, when we had briefed on this, we were not going to go too deep into it, but there are some, some slides. When we worked with Matt, we were going to go through the slides, the full, this full presentation. Is that what you're talking about, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to present a few numbers if you'd like. Is that something you'd be interested in?
I think so, just to see where we're at and, you know.
Okay. Let's, let's move forward on the slides. Let's go another one. Okay, what we're going to talk about is, you know, we talked about those financial statements in, in, in this report. We're going to talk about net position. Let's go ahead, let's go another slide. There's a report in there called a statement of net position, okay? The statement of net position provides an overall view of the city. Net position is basically a, a number that's quantified by, what are the town, the city's total assets minus all their liabilities? What, and if we take away, you know, all the liabilities from the total assets, that's what net position is. And typically, governments are, are able to determine, are we improving or deteriorating based on whether that number goes up or down? And so here you see a, a report of 2019 fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. And let's just draw our attention to the total column. That's going to combine governmental and business-type activities, which are, it's going to include everything for the, for the city, including their, their sewer and water utility. And it's going to collectively put it together. Now, a lot of this, that's a big number, right? That's a lot of money up there. You could see, starting in 19, it was at 14 million due to COVID CARES Act monies. It had a really big jump by 4.7 million. And in 2021, it still had an increase of 345,000. So if the question is, are we improving or deteriorating? You can see that it's consistent improvement, at least between the three years.
But are those numbers true numbers because of the government funding that we've gotten over the last few years?
They, they really are true numbers. Government funding is, is still going to increase your net position. So, you know, grants, you, you always have the ability to get grants. You know, it's always better to have a grant pay for it than, than your own funds pay for it. And, and one thing we need to point out is, you know, it shows 19 million at June 30, 2021. That doesn't mean you have 19 million to spend. You have 19 million worth of, of streets and cars and, and streetlights and bridges, and, you know, there's unspendable portions related to this. And so, yet, we can still, that's still value. In, in fact, we, you know, it's, it's a little deceiving in a way because net position, you have to look at the number. This is a financial number. You also have to look at the physical attributes of your infrastructure. If we, if we keep, for example, if we have streets that we don't ever improve, financial number's going to go up in that position because we're maintaining the revenues and not spending the revenues. But everybody knows, how are we getting better when there's potholes in the streets everywhere? We have to look at infrastructure, how, how it's being improved in addition to looking at these numbers, so it's collected between those, those two items. In my mind, it's like running your own household, you know? You can have a lot of cash in your pocket, but you drive an old car, you know? And so there's, we, we've got to look at not only our, our assets and, and condition they're in, but we also have to look at, that number two is also important.
I think, I kind of have a follow-up on what you just said. You know, the plant worth. We're investing in capital improvements, things like that, building the worth of, of our plant, which is, you know, water, sewer, facilities, everything that, that makes the city function. Does your auditing take that into consideration when you, when you look at these, these kinds of metrics to figure out what the, the overall growth rate is or not? Or is that something that's just somewhere buried in another number, you know, expenses?
No, that's, that's a good question. When we're talking about these numbers, I'm just, I'm just showing you how to read it. And, and auditing, we, we do, we dig into, you know, we, there's not a, there's not an improvement that doesn't go through the accounting, right? So our testing is different than what we're talking about here. But we, we've tested all these additions, and you know, you can have an addition, you can make an investment, and let's say your investment was financed through WIFA. You know, you put a million dollars into a, into a, a water line, and you finance it through WIFA for a million dollars. What's your net position? It's zero because your assets, 1 million, is offset by your WIFA liability for 1 million. And so that number, you're like, okay, well, we got all these new water lines. That means that our net position is, is greater. It's not. It didn't change because we financed it. However, over periods of time, you're going to pay off your debts, and at the same time, the water line's going to depreciate it. It's always changing. So therefore, grants are capital contributions from somebody else. That's where we're going to increase it. Now that water line gets paid for by a grant, and then we, then you would show a million-dollar increase in your net position. Great question, though.
So showing the numbers that you're showing, the net increases that are good, and knowing the, I think what Freddie hit on too, the capital project we've done. So we, these are healthy numbers because we're showing increases, but we're also taking care of our infrastructure at the same time.
Right.
And still showing increase.
Right, and, and again, this is, remember, this, this, this number is all assets, all liabilities, including liabilities like, and I know you don't want to hear it, you know, but the pension liability, you know? That pension liability took a big hit on your net position and continues to take big hits on net position for cities and towns. So this is your net position even after pension liability.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, about 9 to 10 million, so I think.
You, you'll find all that pension liability in here. I'll tell you why it's a little hard to, to look at is because your, your reports are done by an actuary, Public Safety Retirement, or Arizona State Retirement. They have an actuary, they can only give a report based on numbers that are over a year ago. So on the June 30, 2021 audit, it's based on the actuarial report that was based on numbers for June 30, 2020, so it's always a year behind. So you're going, well, didn't we just put a bunch of money towards public safety? It's going to be a little bit delayed, and you'll, you'll see those updates in the upcoming audits. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just, I wanted to just run, run by a brief overview, if we could go back to that, that slide. And just, just so, like I say, by, by overrunning the department budget, yes, we, we need to come back to council to clear that up. On the, if you go back to the, the one that has the.
The budget over.
Yeah, the budget override, if you come back there. Okay, so community organization, we had, we actually paid some bed tax numbers late, and this is one of the problems with, with people not asking for money until it's later on. About the, if you, and Carrie Cottrell is on the line. She's put this together for me, and if we have any additional questions, she can help. But I'm going to summarize. This is one of the problems with bed tax payments being asked for late. If, if you have a, a fourth quarter of, of '21, and you ask for that in the first quarter of '21, '22, it's not a problem. But if they, if they go too far late, they're going to come out of the, the newer budget, and, and I don't know which ones came late, which ones came early. But, but if we were to track this down, we're not going to take the time to track it down, but it, it's money coming in and out of there. On the administration, it was kind of across-the-board. The, the community organization overage was actual number 14, 14,000, about 9.4% over the money. Administration was, we were 5.4% over, about $82,000. And you should have the, I'm reading off of the sheet that you have in front of you, okay? And a lot of that was legal fees and some other stuff, so I'll just leave it at that. The, the police, that was a PSPRS payment that we made that, that either made early or made late and, and fell into another budget cycle. And, and that's how we, that one got, that budget got overrun. In, in both the bed tax and the PSPRS payment, if it was paid out of the wrong budget year, that meant it wasn't paid out of the, the right budget year. So the, the, the overpayment in police, the 544,000, it was extra money in one budget year. So, but it was a hole in the other budget year that we didn't pay, but money fell forward. And, and so it wasn't a loss, it was a timing issue. Now, the magistrate court, I, I believe we gave the magistrate a raise and forgot to include it in the budget. And so, so that was about 2.3, that's 4,000 out of a 178,000 budget, a line item. And then fleet, this is something, we have a, a category called other supplies, and I think we went a little big on the other supplies, and that, about half of that is other supplies. The other expenditures are about under 500 for line item. Normally, we could get in there and move money around within the, the budget. If we have to move money from one general fund, like Scott had said, I, I computed without the fund balance, I'm sorry, the, we, we keep the fund balance in administration, the, I'm the contingency, I'm sorry. But we had a higher, like I say, we had extra money in general fund. We didn't overspend general fund. It was a matter of just keeping the numbers straight between the departments, which we should do, and, and it's wrong to not do that. And we should have done a cleanup or some GL moves to get that straightened out. A lot of things were cleaned up, but these were missed. And so that is just the explanation as to these overspendings. The, it's, I mean, it's, it is what it is at this point, right?
Right, just going forward, just keep an eye on where your budget and actual are and bring it to city council and have a.
And, and so let me, and let me actually give you a better answer than is what it is. If you would like. I didn't rehearse that one. If you would like us to, and I don't know, I checked with Bill, if, if it would be correct for us to go through and go back and ratify the moves, we could, we could do the math, find out where the, where the numbers needed to go to, and come back to council and ratify the changes and say, in this budget cycle, we could move that. But with the audit locked in, I don't know how practical that is. But for your information, I'd be happy, well, at, at some point, we would be happy to, to dig in deeper if council's desire is to see some of the details about the bed tax or the actual items. That would be something that, that you could do, we could do for you. I just would ask that we have some time because we're still. The other thing is we're, we're about to start the, the '21, '22 budget or audit, and, and we, like I say, we're, we're pressing to get ready for that one, but we, we do, you know, we are in the middle of a, a transition in our finance department. So any, any thoughts from council? Would you like to see something else in addition to?
You know, I, I know it's hard to, I think this, we have emphasized with our bed tax to make sure they're turning in the quarterly reports and we're paying them on time. And I know it's difficult sometimes. I think even our EDC, Southern Hila County, which I'm chairman of, it's taken us a long time just to ratify, to, to. time just to rat, to get our books in order and that transition phase, so I see that. But as far as within their city, is it just the sole responsibility of our finance or is it, is that should be the responsibility of our department heads, making sure that, you know, you can move numbers within your budget as long as you don't go over your overall balance at the bottom? Is that the city, is that the department head's responsibility also?
It's a shared, it's a shared responsibility. At the time that this budget was going on, they were, the, all departments were getting monthly, monthly budget updates and they knew where they were at on that. I would say that the PSPRS one, totally out of control PD. That was, we tried to pay ahead the PSPRS and, and there were changes at these times and so that one is, is tough. Magistrate Court, I think just an oversight that we, it had been, the magistrate court has been the same amount for so long and then we did it, we approved a boost and didn't build that in. I put that one on administration. Fleet, we had changes in staffing at that point and I think that that fell through the cracks on some of the proper ways to do that and so I bear some responsibility for that also. And then on the administration, that is city manager's office and that one is on me.
Okay, so we got a truck that fell off the back of the truck and then we can get it for a smoking deal, so we didn't budget it, but we can pick it up for a great deal. So we decided, heck with it, let's pull the trigger and buy it, okay? So you're saying that that's a ding on the budget because we didn't budget it in that department or do we just have to go in and modify the budget so that it reflects what we're trying to do?
Right, remember, these budgets are about transparency. I mean, you created a budget, it's a transparent document, so when you are gonna go over budget, you need to be transparent, bring the budget to, the budget adjustment to council and move money from contingency into your department that you need to spend from and it's now transparent to everybody what you're doing.
Okay, so you have to adjust the budget as well as adjusting the money?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Shipley, we, if we find a deal and we need to go over that department budget, we need to come and ask for money and that is what we would do in that situation. These were some, these are, a lot of these are slow roll ones where we got to the end of the budget and, and it just went a little bit over and we've done this before, we've had a budget cleanup where we come back and straighten all this out. Also on line items, there, there are ways to move in between and it's, this is not an issue of not going to fund balance and asking you for money from the fund balance, it is an issue of us not coming in and saying, we went over in this department of administration, so we're gonna, we have extra money at the end of the budget cycle, so we can pull it from, I don't want to name anybody, the zoology department, I always use that one, so it gets mad at me. So we could move that money if we had extra in one budget and we're short in another budget, we can move that, it's all general fund money, but to move between budgets requires council approval. And so that is where we, what we should have done and that is what we need to do better at, is at the end of the cycle and when we're straightening out the budget at the end of the year, that we make those interdepartment transfers and bring those forward to council.
Mike. So we all know that we've been having trouble in our financial department through the last year.
Right, but this predates this.
Right, okay, so, I mean, we, I don't think it's that bad of an audit report, really.
Between audits, you can't.
Right, yeah. But if we have, if we can get that finance department straightened out and filled in, we should be able to eliminate a lot of these problems. And we're not gonna come off with no violations or no missteps or anything, but we might be able to control this part of the budget where we're going over our individual budgets.
And I would, I would characterize, we were having, we were having staffing shortages in our finance department. I wouldn't say trouble, but I would say staffing shortages, yes. And so in that, but we just have to be, and we've already told and committed to council that in January, we're gonna come to and do a cleanup and just let you know, these are revenue assumptions, this is where we're at, these are spending assumptions, this is where we're at, and if we need to move money around, I think we probably know there are some things that I, that we do, we will take care of that, we will do that, that process there. So we can get ahead of this, so just because we have these difficulties, doesn't necessarily mean that this is gonna happen again in the next budget cycle. Now the, I would say the lateness one, you might see that another year.
Well, just one last comment, you know, I wanna, I wanna compliment our finance department and I know Jeanne's not here with us anymore, she's retired, but you know, in the past couple of years and since this audit, there is a lot of moving parts, a lot of different money coming through with federal money, with state money and grants, I mean, look at the, the amount our budget has increased in the past five years, but that's what it's, and that's what it is. It is in trouble in the finances, it's the shortages and just a lot of moving parts. I have not seen as much activity going on within the finance of a city and I worked for this city for 30 years in the history of the city.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Scott, I was gonna ask you, you work with a lot of cities, different sizes, I think for our population, we have a fairly complex budget.
Yeah, it is, it is complex and I do want to point out that a lot of small cities and towns, just like you, have a similar finding that's related to the departments being over budget. There's, there's just a lot to, a lot of moving parts, right? So, and I do want to also point out just a little bit, not off subject, it's still on subject, but you know, I've, I've been doing the audit for a few years now here and even after the first day of my fieldwork, I noticed that the city's finances were more prepared than they've been in all the time that I've actually worked with the city, meaning that, you know, I don't expect to come in and not have to propose an adjustment, you know, to fix something. It wasn't perfect and I didn't expect it to be perfect, but there were times that I've presented to city council and with a finding, we had findings related to the multiple journal entries, accounting adjustments that we had to do to prepare the financials, to get it to be auditable. We do not have that finding anymore and it has been improved from year to year to the point that it is obviously not a finding and it's as clean as I've seen it. So I'd like to give the news that it, that other than, you know, being late, which is one thing, the financial numbers themselves were as good as I've seen them.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Carrie Cottrell, our finance manager is on Zoom, she, I have her zooming in in case there are questions that I couldn't answer, but she has, on the many years, that is her assignment, is prepare this audit and bring these numbers forward. She works very closely with Scott and his team, under, previously under Jeanne's supervision, but, but the point person on this audit and will be in the past audits has been Carrie and kudos to Carrie for the hard work she's done and, and working with the auditors and she, she, we have a good team working, they know, they know each other and they know what to expect and that makes it just simpler and more accurate.
And we want to thank Carrie for that too, for stepping up, stepping in and getting this done. We want to compliment for her for that, yes.
Right now, she is the finance department.
Exactly, that's what I mean, we need to get that.
Yeah, we, November, November 17th, we have an additional person coming on, an accountant to, that'll work under Carrie and help her expand the ability to do more. Right now, she's all about payroll, accounts payable, making sure we're legal and just keeping the, everything flowing. Once we have this new person onboard mid-November, a globe native that's coming back to Globe and we'll introduce her soon, it'll give Carrie that, that chance to, to start expanding and doing additional things, which is to prepare for the next audit. It's just a circle, yeah.
Well, thank you very, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Carrie, thank you, if you're out there, I know she's, she's listening in.
So next we go to the consent calendar and matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Do we have item A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10A, prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is the...
Okay. And I have the corrected one, yeah. Okay. And consider, and accounts payable, 255,048 and 83 cents. Consideration of approval of council minutes, September 27, 2022, council minutes. Consideration of agreements and purchases less than 25,000. Consideration of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission's recommendation to approve a request to install new signage for Monti Day offices to be located at 285 North Broad Street. And consideration of the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission's recommendation to, to approve the downtown Globe Seek and Find Hila Monster project, an art program initiated by the I-Art organization to be located on the exterior walls of participating downtown buildings. Do we have anybody from the public, the staff or the council wanting to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have four B, let me see, four, B, C, and D removed for discussion.
Which one? B, C, and D?
Four, not four, C and D, I'm sorry.
B and D?
Yeah.
Any other ones?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as read and remove item C and D for further discussion.
We have a motion, a second for approval of consent minus C and D, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. So item C, Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I received a call from a constituent earlier today questioning both C and D, I'll take C first, and basically the concern was that apparently there's some friction within the Historical Preservation Advisory Commission and that this item didn't come before them or they didn't receive a staff report. And the way the process is set up, I think they're supposed to get the...
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Pastor, I did attend that Historic Preservation District. The item, Mayor, you saw, it was presented and it is, just so you know, it is this logo that's going on a door on a Broad Street building. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm just relating and complaining.
Right, and so I, so just to confirm for anybody who, just to verify, Mr. Mayor, you were there, I were there, I was there and it was, it did go through Historic Preservation and it will appear on the minutes when they...
And the gentleman was there on Zoom also explaining the, this is the purchase of the building that they're gonna open downtown and the other stuff that's going on top, which is apartments, but all this is, is a logo that's going on the front window, the front door of it and that was voted on unanimously.
And, but because it is a Historical Preservation District, something like this does need to be, be approved and the address is 286 North Broad.
So if we can, can we get a motion to approve item C before moving to D then?
Mr. Mayor, our motion, after this discussion, I motion to approve item C as read.
Motion and a second for approval of item C, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passed. Okay, Mike, item D.
Also, another complaint about item D was that, let's see, the friction within the committee, members resigning and stuff, the city added an extra layer, this is what was expressed to me, the city has added an extra layer in the process of approval for H-PAC and they are not making recommendations, they are just rubber stamping staff recommendations. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the, we had, had a presentation that explains the, the process. Council has appointed members to H-PAC and H-PAC are to evaluate those and make recommendations back to council and I would, I would say that the rubber stamp is a strong word, but I think it's one person's opinion as to the process and I actually am going to work with Councilman Pastor to clarify and answer any questions about that. Okay? But, but I, and I don't know if anybody else, or if anybody else wanted to have any other discussions about the Seek and Find Hila Monster projects, but I believe, since we're talking about it, Danny, were we able to get a sample that you can fill up with the Hila Monster? Oh, no, no, it's a, they, it's in the packet, isn't it in the packet? Yeah, okay, no, no, we don't need just, but they, it, just wanted to explain the program or Mayor, do you want to explain?
Yeah, just to comment on it, this is a program by I-Art and it's about putting, I think they're no bigger than 24-inch Hila Monsters. In certain areas, they're not gonna be where they're visible right away, high up or whatever, they'll be maybe hidden behind a wall or something. It's just something to attract people to the downtown area and I think Miami has the same thing, something like they have cats painted in different places. There was a, a, a long discussion on it, they had representatives from I-Art, there was a lot of questions, you know, about the, the mural, the art itself, but we, we can't control what the mural or the artwork of what they're requesting. All we can do is approve the program and that's, so that was a big question on it and, and there has been a lot of, there has been some resignations, but I think what needs to happen, need to understand, they're a subcommittee of the council and they need to, they need to abide by open meeting law, they need to, there's a lot of restrictions when they become a subcommittee of the council and I don't know if that's part of the problem, but, but I'll tell you what, they have done an amazing job. From what we had before Historic Preservation, they have gone through and provided and updated all the policies or guidelines and this group has really done, I hated to see some of those individuals go because they put a lot of time and effort into, into H-PAC from where it was.
Sure, and, and, and this is, this is information I'm bringing forward because a constituent complained about, that's our job to bring those back to things. I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent, but I do have a question about, and I think Paul and I discussed this yesterday, the, the Hila Monsters, are they gonna paint them on the historical buildings and if they do, will that affect the designation of that historical building? Has anybody looked at that issue? You know, like if they put one on the steps over there at Holy Angels Church or at the courthouse, those are designated national historic buildings, would that take that away from them or has anybody looked at that? That's my question, I was thinking about this.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, let me address that, all of this has run through Dana Burkhardt, our zoning administrator, who's fully aware of the requirements and has evaluated that and my confirmation with him is that these are in compliance for what is current in place, so the...
As long as a building owner approves it, it's okay.
That is, that is, and so the, they've approved four, they've approved, just so council knows, they pre-approved another 10, but the, the process is, the city will have to, if you vote to approve this, then they will move forward with putting the, I think four or five up, they're seeking out additional people, building owners who want to have these painted on their building. It's a crossover between, you know, historic, but it's kinda, it's a way to market and give people something to take note of and you, I will tell you, the, the people who are new to Globe are always looking around, they're looking up, they're looking down, they're gonna see this, there's a campaign that goes with that. If, when the campaign ends, they'll be painted over and they'll be removed, so these are permanent for during the campaign, but, but will not be there, intended to be there forever. And I, I think it's a good blend, the business owners want that and I think we have to balance those needs of business owners trying to, to market their projects, but they're in historical buildings, I don't think, I think the historical, the Historic Preservation looked at this really hard, they had a lot of thoughts on this and it truly is, is that a historical Hila Monster? No, it's kind of a fun jovial Hila... No, it's kind of a a fun jovial Gila Monster in different positions, but I think that's what the the owners are wanting, and and they they thought it was uh acceptable uh for, given the the marching orders and everything like that, and um, but it was a, it was a good topic.
It it, it's a contract that they sign with I-Art between the owner, and and again, if it fades or starts going away, they have to, they have to paint it over, but I don't know if it'd be any different than somebody painting a mural on their historic building. I mean, w- does that take away the historic designation? No, we have, we have multiple
Yep.
Of murals now going up.
And 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 the the reason, any, any changes, the way our code is written, any changes that is uh substantial to the building, um, needs to go through historical preservation. Um, I I think that uh, while it it seems like there's a lot of work and and it's it's very nuanced, um, there'll be a time in the near future where we're gonna be darn happy that we have a historical preservation, uh, because we haven't seen anything radical or anything kind of way out there. This, this makes sure uh that that we have a a a backstop to anybody that wanted to do something that would really mess up um, conflict with our our v- council's vision and and the citizens' vision of of historic downtown, uh, so it's worth the effort, we we thank the volunteers, I would, I would not want to characterize the, any of the resignations um, uh, of the previous ones, people come, they work hard on this, um, but but then they find that the the burden is is tough, and 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 they have to to back out because they want to do a job, they can't contribute, so I think some of the resignations, I I can only think of one uh, that that may be because of a a conflict with the vision uh, or or the process, um, the the rest, I believe, is just a matter of time commitment and wanting to do a good job, and they they served and uh, and moved past the baton off.
And and like I said, I can't commend them more than what the the work they've done, and and we take their recommendation very seriously, I think I do anyway, I, you know, and I don't, I don't know if I'm speaking to the whole council, but we take their recommendation very seriously.
And Mr. Mayor, while we're, while we're talking about this, I think we can bring this up now, one of the ideas we had had is a a joint meeting of historical preservation and the council, because they're there to to try, they're there to give recommendations to you, and and we think it would be helpful if you had a discussion with them as to kinda, oh, there they are, a little, little son of a guns there, um, and they're, they're not too big, you know, no more than twenty-four inches, um, uh, so not easy to spot, but I think a a a joint meeting of of council and the historical preservation, um, so they can get a feel, you you put them on there and ask them to do a job, and I think it'd be be time well spent for them to explain what, how they approach their job, and time well spent for you to talk about what you're looking for as um, as a- as you've assigned them to that, uh, some expectations, you know, as to how you think, because they're, they're here to support you, they're here to get in the weeds and support this council so you can make good decisions that are not in conflict with with um, our our historical roots.
Mayor, I would move to approve item four D.
Motion second for approval, item four D. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, consideration to approve resolution eighteen sixty-five to abandon approximately, is that three thousand six hundred and twenty square feet of the South Hill Street right-of-way deeded to the abutting property owner and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A, prior discussion rule. And Shelley, can you read resolution number eighteen sixty-five, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number eighteen sixty-five. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Globe, Gila County, Arizona, providing for abandonment of a certain portion of the city's existing right-of-way on South Hill Street to the adjacent property within the city limits of Globe, Gila County, Arizona. If council please agree.
Yes. And we have Dana online to uh explain this.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Gomaros, council members, good evening. Thank you. Thank you, I'll hop right in, uh, this particular abandonment is uh, was identified necessary uh in the work of the Hill Street School uh project, a redevelopment project, and basically what resulted is, and I'll hop right in, um, was that uh, this is a map from the county assessor's office, the red boundaries are the county assessor's GIS boundaries, as they've surveyed them basically and converted them into uh their GIS system. Uh, what they found, and if you recall, when we went through the rezoning process and looked at initial site plan uh for the work, typically a developer won't do a survey at that point, um, because they're doing their fact finding, they've got this boundary that they can utilize and so forth, but what they did find is, what I'll show you uh in a moment, this Hill Street School property line is not where the county assessor hasn't shown here, it's actually about nine feet uh into the property uh going through the Hill Street School building, and I'll explain that that in greater detail. On the south side, you see a little bit of a sawtooth, one of our goals initially, before we even recognized that that was a uh situation on Hill Street School parcel, was that uh we've also got this sawtooth, uh, this awkward roadway kind of um scenario down here, and how did that become uh, became the question, but anyway, so this is Nerd Burger, this is the parcel next to Nerd Burger, that was purchased by Nerd Burger and and a partner, uh, and as you can see, when they did their, for some reason or another, they had to do a, a uh record of survey for the property, um, that survey came up and placed the property line behind the sidewalk where it should be, uh, unlike these adjacent parcels, I'll show you how we think all this develops, and as you see on this side of the street, the GIS, uh, county GIS shows the parcel boundary right behind sidewalk as well, again, where we want it, we want all that public infrastructure in our right-of-way. So, that's the survey I just mentioned, and sorry, north is uh on that last drawing, north was up, it's uh, you see the north there, well, north's up on this one, the last drawing, I guess, north would have been a little bit to the left, but anyway, um, there's the parcel, that's the surveyed boundary that they found, again, going through the building. Um, this dash and X line is actually signifies a fence on a survey, and that's actually located, it's that chain link fence that's out there right behind the sidewalk, uh, and basically that's effectively where the property line should be, and I'll show you why I say should. Um, so this is an old survey from nineteen fifty-nine by ADOT, when they were preparing the plans to improve Hill Street School, or Hill Street, which I understand was the uh, was the highway at the time, or ADOT right-of-way, obviously, they were doing the work. Uh, so anyway, here you see that corner of the Hill Street School, and you see this, what's labeled as a lot line running through the building, and then they also identified this lot line, which is behind the sidewalk in all likelihood, uh, the existing right-of-way. Um, so normally the lot line would end, and then right-of-way begins, but for some reason they have these two different lines drawn, um, and then on the south side, you see uh existing right-of-way line, and then ADOT identifying a new right-of-way line. So basically, when they were paving, I think they realized that the alignment was off previously probably, and when they were gonna do the improvement of through this section of Hill Street, um, this is what they defined as their boundaries for their right-of-way, and they went and captured an easement from all of these property owners um, for right-of-way purposes, but again, it's just an easement, so I think when that Nerd Burger survey occurred, they found the easement and just assumed it was right-of-way at that time, a dedicated right-of-way, and that's why that Nerd Burger parcel pops down behind sidewalk where we want it, uh, unlike the other adjacent parcels, so anyway, today's discussion's only for uh the correction of the north side, uh, which is the Hill Street School parcel, and then we'll come up, uh, come before you in the future, with cleaning up and getting uh that easement converted into right-of-way uh on the south side. Um, so that's basically how, what we found, uh, and county records indicate that it was never really actually deeded, and all the formal processes did not occur to uh abandon and relocate that right-of-way as it exists today, so, uh, again, county uh assessor maps, book of maps, um, and you'll, you see that same scenario, uh, again, that Nerd Burger, this dash line, I think, was indicative of prior property line, and in which, in that difference area, which is about nine feet, again, basically the whole right-of-way shifted south nine feet based on some pro- probably the original plat uh from the early nineteen hundreds, so, sorry, this is boring stuff, and then you see right up here on top, easement acquired by ADOT, now turned over to the city of Globe, well, that's all a gray area, but they, that's what uh, what apparently happened at some time, but again, the formalities aren't evident in the county assessor records, um, so that's why we're here today, cleaning up the north side, actually, they don't, we'll even discuss that, but we will come before you to deal with that north side, several property owners, on the south side, there are several property owners there that we need to uh approach in doing that, and that's more of a city effort, unlike um, this process here, we have one property owner who's needing to have that amendment uh occur so they can have a appropriate design on their site, uh, and that's basically a summary of it, the existing location is shown in yellow, uh, location based on those ADOT nineteen fifty-nine improvements that I showed you are in the uh, the cyan color or the aqua color, uh, and that's what we're doing ultimately, it's uh shifting that, this resolution before you is strictly to move uh the yellow line on the north side of downhill street uh to back to sidewalk, where the county assessor shows it to be. Um, and then also included in that resolution is the deed where we then relinquish that piece of property to that property owner, this would allow them to then draw a record of survey, joining, because when your action tonight, or in two weeks on your second read, uh, should it be approved, would create a separate parcel of land uh deeded to that owner, he'll then marry those and join those lots, dissolve that common lot line between those two parcels, and that's how we get a clean uh parcel, so, that's it, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Ready?
Mike, there's the the yellow, anything that, uh, there it is, the the yellow dotted line represents the city's right-of-way, the the uh turquoise line represents the ADOT right-of-way, and what we're doing here is cleaning up the city right-of-way to match the ADOT right-of-way, am I accurate?
So as of now, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilman, if I could just correct that, so it's all city right-of-way now, because we took all this over from ADOT sometime in the past. Uh, what the aqua line is, is when ADOT was doing the improvements of this property, that's where they said, this is our boundaries, this is our right-of-way boundaries. Does that make sense? However, they never went through the formal process to adjust that right-of-way with recording and abandoning and deeding the land, so that's what we're doing today, so basically, the right, when ADOT did that construction, and who knows what was prior to that, they said, this is the right-of-way, it's between the aqua lines, not the yellow lines, however, the record of survey and prior uh, the plating of all of this, this neighborhood, um, shows it where the yellow is, and ADOT basically said, no, it's down on the aqua, that's where our line is, that's what it is, so if that makes sense.
Mike, do you have a question?
And and obviously, that, this is gonna make it uh beneficial to Gorman to begin their project and to the city also, will be okay?
Right, it's gonna get the Hill Street School out of the city's right-of-way.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, councilman Pastor, I, like I say, I don't, I don't see it as a benefit, I think it's a a request for us to follow through with what we should have done sooner, um, to to our responsibility to the property owner, uh, that we we keep these aligned and and allow them to to invest money and make sure they have clear legal um, control over what what is rightfully there.
It's not gonna hold them back if they don't.
Yeah, but no, and and that's why we're, we're asking to waive the rule, because we'd, we'd like to get this cleaned up and and get this to them, get it filed, uh, but I I don't see it as a benefit, I I see it as a a long list of um, uh, it's a responsibility to do that, and a long list of of cleanups that we do as we come across them, uh, the the one thing we've changed is, is when we come across something, we spend the money and and get it fixed.
Unfortunately, this is on Gorman Company to pay for, because they obviously need it, uh, but to Paul's point, um, we do have a number of these situations, we, when somebody's doing diligence on a piece of land, they go to the county assessor, where does the assessor show the boundaries? Oh, okay, we're good, and then you hire a surveyor, and it, it lifts up the rug, basically, and you see what's underneath the rug. And we are.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve.
Five A.
Five A?
New business.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number eighteen sixty-five to abandon approximately three thousand six hundred and twenty square feet of South Hill Street right-of-way, deeded to the abutting property owner and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A, prior discussion rule.
Motion second for approval of item five A. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Dana, thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
You all, thank you very much.
Item five B, discussion and consideration to approve the purchase of two refurbished Life Pac fifteen heart monitors from Coast Medical Equipment for the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents, funded through account number ten dash five six dash five two zero zero CIP rugged heart monitor, and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A, prior discussion rule, chief.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget process, um, we did request and were were granted funding through the CIP for the purchase of a rugged heart monitor, um, we began to, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the the EMS portion of what we do accounts for about eighty to eighty-five percent of the workload that that uh, the personnel from the fire department deal with. When we started looking at options, what was available, what was, you know, what was, what was functioning, what was proven reliable, um, a lot of discussion came back to the availability and what we could, what we could find with with Life Pac fifteens. Life Pac fifteens are the, are the current monitors that we have in service with the fire department, these units have proven extremely reliable, they're, they've, the service with them has been exceptional, as we've, as we send them off regularly for, to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, uh, giving us the information we need them to give, and when we need them to give it to us. The uh, there are a number of of companies out there that provide for refurbishment of these units, um, including the company that we purchased from originally, we were looking as, as we started going through that, you know, we were looking at at different uh, different companies that could provide us that, and and requested those quotes to be provided. The units that that we have, Tri-Cities operating with the same units, um, they've been in service, they've been, they've been functioning very well, um, they've been functioning very well for them. We uh, after that evaluation, the consensus was from, from uh our ALS providers that we, we seek to to put two refurbished Life Pac fifteens in service through this purchase, and that gives us the opportunity to not only outfit all frontline apparatus, but in the event that we have one go down, we have one that can immediately be placed in service from, from either a reserve apparatus or or uh, it can be deployed with with a wildland team and give us the opportunity to to have one in the field where we've had before, and they've proved very beneficial in the field as we've provided care during wildland incidents to to firefighters uh there. We're looking to complete this purchase through Coast Biomedical, um, in looking at at the quotes that were provided, uh, they were, they were not the lowest bid, however, they are, you know, they had units readily available, um, they're on the west coast versus the other vendor that we were looking at that's on the east coast, so our our turnaround time for potentially sending off those units for for service through them is is quicker, um, they provide us a clear cost in in what their current service uh costs were, which were very reasonable, when we looked at it. When we looked at it, the uh and they were within about two thousand one hundred and sixty seven dollars of the the lowest bid on those. With that, you know, these units, we we use them every day. They're, we're using them every day to assess patients, to give us the information we need. Uh, we look at, you know, heart rhythms, uh we look at defibrillation in the event that that's needed. We can look at um numerous other things if we have to innovate patients. You know, it it tells us that we're in the correct place where we need to be, um that those patients are being oxygenated in the way that they need to be. They're a, they're a vital piece of equipment for what we do and having an additional two in service with the department um will be, you know, a major benefit to us and that we we have that redundancy. And we have those on on units that, you know, in the event that we're we're running multiple calls, we have the ability to deploy multiple units for patients. If there's any question.
Chief, I have just two questions. So you're not trading in any units, you're adding to your inventory?
We're adding to our inventory.
And uh ju- just the cost now, I I know these are refurbished, but what about fifteen, sixteen thousand a piece? What's the price for a brand new unit now?
A brand new unit, the the closest we came to the the ones we looked at, um the other units we were looking at were about forty five, forty, between forty five to fifty thousand dollars. There are, there are units out there, um, you know, there was one that we were extremely, extremely impressed with. Um, that ha- it has a lot of flexibility, it has a lighter weight, a lighter deployment weight. Um, it has some modularity that you can adjust. Um, but but again, in looking at what are we going to get for for uh the dollars that we're spending in terms of of redundancy and terms of, you know, what is training going to require? You know, these units, as soon as we get them and have everything there, they're in service. We don't, we don't require any additional training for our personnel. And we don't require um a different service rep. We don't require anything other than we get them and we put them in service.
Thank you. Yeah.
They're not cheap, they do a, they they provide a lot of information. Um, one of the things, you know, in looking at this, one of the things that was evaluated is is uh because of the the patient care reporting system that we use for electronic patient records um is in the process of being updated because they were bought. You know, we we're looking for units that communicate back and forth. Uh, and these units have that technology already, even though they're, you know, even though they're a little bit older unit um and been around for a little while, they have that technology built in. So um our our personnel will have the ability to put that monitor on a patient and that data will automatically transfer into their patient care record um with a push of a button. Once, once that system is up and running for us, you know, that capability saves time in documentation. It 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 can save us the time in transmitting information to the hospital and relaying what's going on with our patients. The the capability exists for for data to go directly from our machines to the to the hospital. Now, that capability has to be put in place at at the hospital as well. And we've had some discussions previously and about options and opportunities to do that, uh because we do feel it's it's going to be um we do feel like it gives our personnel, not only, you know, our personnel work under the the management of the ER doctor on duty at the time, who's who's supervised by a medical director. The more data we can provide them in real time, um the better off we are in terms of not only our own decision making, but in terms of them backing us up and saying yes or no, that that's the correct course of action. We're, I'm still in the process of of looking at exactly what the new vendor, um how the new vendor will vendor will interact with with the current system we have. But um it it's my understanding that 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 system is also similar to what CDRMC is actually moving toward in their patient care record or the last I, the last information I had. So you know, anything that allows us to operate more seamlessly with them and that gives our personnel the information they need is going to be of great benefit to our personnel and the patients that they're serving.
Mayor, I would move to approve five item five B and with the prior discussion two dash four dash ten A prior discussion. Okay.
Motion a second for approval of item five B, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, council, thank you.
We move to action items. Item six A, consideration to approve fiscal year twenty twenty three governor's office highway safety step step enforcement overtime grant in the amount of six thousand ninety one dollars and zero cents and the DUI enforcement overtime grant in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and twenty two dollars and zero cents.
Mayor and council, uh just coming to you tonight to request uh the acceptance of the the grant funds, we were recently notified of the award. There's two different grants associated with that. One, the speed enforcement grant that we would carry out throughout different like special events and things like that. Uh, the second one's a DUI enforcement grant to pay overtime uh during holidays and special events. And then I think with the DUI grant that we received, there's some equipment involved with that, like the preliminary breath test uh to put in the patrol vehicle. So just asking that the the grant be, the amount be awarded. There's no matching funds that are that go along with that. We uh put out the overtime pay in the beginning and then we seek reimbursement from the governor's office highway safety uh on a quarterly basis.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, uh, again, uh, do it to your staff.
Mr. Uh.
You have a question?
No, I was going to make the the motion. Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, and uh I make a motion to approve F F F Y twenty twenty three GOHS step and DUI enforcement grant in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars.
Thank you. Motion a second for approval of item six A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, any abstaining? Motion pass. Item six B, consideration to approve resolution eighteen sixty six authorizing the purchase of the property owned by Jess and Kathy Bollinger located at thirteen hundred North Broad Street for the purchase price of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Shelley, can you read resolution number eighteen sixty six, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number eighteen sixty six, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Globe, Arizona, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute the real estate purchase and sale agreement. Is council president?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've been leasing this building from uh Jess Bollinger. Um, and came to agreement on the price and and this um everything is going well. We've gotten a a successful appraisal and we've gotten an acceptable um uh phase one environmental uh uh report. We have the, if if you would like to learn more about both of those two items, uh we do have an e-session scheduled uh that we could, we could talk about those if that is council's pleasure. Um, uh, and or you can move forward with with uh the purchase of it. And we can do the e-session. It it depends on whether you want to see the information prior to voting on this, or we can share it with you briefly um after the approval, but it's council's pleasure on moving forward. Staff is recommending that we move forward with the the purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I read that information earlier this afternoon and I was satisfied with the the scope of work of the document and I'm satisfied where it is to debate.
We've had a pretty extensive conversation and discussion on this project already, so.
Yeah, no, we we have. And um we do, we do have, oh, did you want to pass out there? We do have the the one, the one feature, you can see the property up here. Uh, we, just so everyone knows, we're getting both the um what used to be Mel's Auto.
Mel's Auto, yeah.
Yeah, and um Bob's Tire Shop and a couple of, um, let's see here. Uh, it it's both parcels and so you can see that it it we get the parking area there. Um, yeah, Mel's use in sixty five, it was listed in a city directory as Mel's use uh cars. And the other property is Langham and Healy Motors. Um, another part of the the northern property was Salling Motors. Um, and uh Bob's Tire in nineteen ninety five. Um, and then uh some used by Multitec and Radio Shack, but most prominently has been uh Globe Gun and Pawn. But the the first, the first map on top that that we're, you're showing is from nineteen forty three. Um, and uh it's fun to look at that and it's also fun to compare the housing around that. The second one is a a pretty clear one that shows the bigger picture. Um, and then the close up that's on the screen is the most current property outline. Just so everybody understands the property that we're buying, it's it, we we painted over the big pawn on the side. And uh it is is up and running and we've been leasing that, but it's a good investment. It's a, it's a, you know, um Jesse Bollinger has been very supportive of the city and and this is a a very fair deal. Kudos to him for helping us out.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Well, if you could remind me of, um, what was our rental?
Um, I I'm just. I think it was twenty one thousand a year. So probably, yeah. So probably should have done this sooner.
Yeah, well, yeah. We've had a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
If if there's no further discussion? I would make a motion that we approve contract number CS twenty twenty three zero 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 one. Wait a minute.
Six B, six B.
Oh.
Resolution.
Okay, here we go.
He's taking some of your time.
I flipped, I flipped my packet before I got through with it. Motion to approve resolution, I make a motion to approve resolution number eighteen sixty six authorizing the purchase of the Bollinger property located at thirteen hundred North Broad Street, authorizing the city manager to execute the real estate per- purchase and waive the prior discussion.
Get a motion a second and we won't need a wave because this is an action item.
We we brought this, yeah, it's action because we brought this before. And so this is the final, this is the final time, but we've seen it before.
We have a motion a second for approval of item six B, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, any abstaining? Motion pass.
And and Mr. Mayor, members of council, um uh gigantic kudos to Shelley for uh walking through the process through the regular real estate mag- magnet now.
Cooper.
Yeah.
Item six C, discussion and possible approval of contract number CS dash two zero two three dash zero 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 one with Apache Underground for the Globe Community Center sewer line replacement project with a fund in the amount not to exceed one million one hundred and forty seven thousand eight hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty cents with an owner's contingency in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars and thirty eight cents for a total of one million two hundred and sixty two thousand six hundred and thirty nine dollars and eighteen cents to come from account number five one dash eight zero dash five two two zero zero wastewater capital outlet construction with possible reimbursement from WIPA. Gary.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh I am so thankful that most of the people left because you know how nervous I get talking in front of people. So um I I appreciate it. So this is our first WIPA project out of the uh two thousand twenty one WIPA um uh loan grant that we got. And um it came in uh above the engineer's estimate, but the engineer's estimate was done two years ago. And uh but it's within the uh about a forty percent of that. And with the escalating prices, uh staff feels like like uh it's a good, it's a good price. Now, we did only get one uh bid on the on the project, but we had multiple people um at the pre-bid and so forth and and I think they just felt like they couldn't compete with this company. So uh anyway, we're asking tonight, it's uh um we we've got it up here, the plans uh we have a, yeah, that's a better location out there. This uh goes from Tri-City Fire um down uh um down Jess Hayes, ties in the Beschbogawa, uh ties in the community center, ties in the pool, uh goes down to uh um Ice House Can- Canyon Creek, um down all the way to the Boys and Girls Club and we tie in that property. The 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 real focus here was to try to tie in all the city property, get a molecule septic and uh holding tanks and and put them wi- within our system. It all also gives us the ability to have that line in place that we can tie on to for uh either current or future uh property owners. You've already had a couple of property owners come at us and and want to know when it's going to be put in because they want to tie onto it as well. And it's not just the subdivision, it's it's other property owners around as well. So um anyway, it's it's the first of our project. Uh, we have a a two million dollar loan grant um available. It's going to cut into the rest of our projects, but uh, you know, we we might have to go back and and uh talk about another loan grant with WIPA. And uh we talked about a little bit of that in the infrastructure meetings, I know. So um I'm asking tonight that you approve uh this uh contract CS uh twenty twenty three zero zero one for a hun- uh for one million one hundred and forty seven thousand eight hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty cents with a ten percent contingency, which takes it up to one million two hundred and sixty two thousand six thirty nine uh eighteen um to get our WIPA project started.
Gary, is this going to take the one, the one point two, is that going to be all WIPA then?
Well, um, I I can never say all because it has to be approved by WIPA. So so that's why we 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 put it to you like this because we have it in the CIP for wastewater. Um, but this was an approved project by WIPA in the original uh uh application. So when we turn it into them, which we will after you approve it, uh then they approve it as well, so.
Yeah, because I think our initial numbers were around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what I said, we're we're about forty seven percent over. And uh but those initial numbers were were done in two thousand twenty, I believe.
Fernando?
Go ahead.
Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, so the total footage of all this, excuse me, the total footage of all of this project here?
I think it's about three thousand, is it, John? Okay, it it's, I think it's slightly under three thousand. I don't know, around three thousand feet.
Linear feet.
Linear feet, yeah. So um there there is, um, I've talked to the contractors, there's uh some ability maybe to do some value engineering, but um I'm not real optimistic there, I have to see what that is and uh and uh but he, at the same time, he's saying, well, we can do this and save money. But he's also saying, yeah, but this has to be done, so I think it's going to probably balance out. But um we're we're definitely going to uh get this project underway. And we want to be able to tie John's new bathroom in and tie Besh in and tie the new pool in and and every, everything in between.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's where do you put the owner's contingency and where do you own it? I don't know.
So we we, we put the owner's contingency because uh we control the contingency amount and not the contractor. So um so that's, we listen to owner's contingency because it's not part of the contract that way. It's our money um that that you've approved for the owners to use, not the contractor. So that's just the verbiage that I've always used.
I think in a ten minute one point two nine.
So it it uh with the contingency, it's it's one point two six two. Yeah, so with the contingency, so it come in at uh a one point uh one four seven uh on the bid. And this is a contractor that we've used multiple times before. And uh and Rick and I kind of pulled a few favors to get them to bid on it, so. It it's it's tough to get contractors up here now, as as Freddie can probably tell you, because uh, you know, it's it's just that. because, uh, you know, it's, it's just that people are more secure bidding in the cities and around the cities, because the subcontractors and the, and the workforce is more available there.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, Jerry, it, you know, if you look at that, that map, you can kind of tell that it's not flat, but I, I think that's the, the, the other thing is, in, in, we have challenges with putting these types of systems in.
There are, one, one of the biggest things, and we probably won't get started on this project till February, a- and mainly because of the manholes. We're going to have to order the manholes, and they're months out. And, um, and like Paul said, none, nothing is level. So, we've got a series of dropped manholes to get it from the, uh, community center down to the, uh, bed, uh, down to Jess Hayes Road. Uh, and we have one pump, uh, station at Besch. Um, one pump station, it's just a small grinder and, and, and pump station. But that's one of the things that, uh, that Mark Garner from Apache Underground wants to talk to us. He thinks he can gravity feed that, so, so, uh, which is a benefit for us. So, uh, it, it's, it's a good project. It was locally designed and, and, uh, locally, uh, um, put out the bid. So, and Mark's, Mark's been a big player up here.
So, the line will be substantial enough that if we do the development across the road there, it'll be able to handle that volume?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea if they wanted to tie on us.
You have a question?
Uh, yeah, just, um, looking at cost versus benefits, you said a lot of this area is, is on septic and holding tanks, and, you know, with the, with the, uh, the pool and, and all the work that's being done at, at community center, you know, expectations for, uh, greater numbers of people, um, hanging out there and using all the facilities. Is, what is the, the cost savings in all the maintenance that you have to do on those holding tanks and the septics and things like that? Because I know that has to be monitored probably all the time, right?
So, um, you know, one of the reasons that we have not been dinged, uh, environmentally on this is that guy over there, because he's diligent about making sure that those holding tanks are pumped, because we don't have leach lines out there, we have holding tanks. And, and, uh, and so he makes sure that they're empty. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, people that use those, utilize the bathrooms and the fields up there. And that's just kind of the, um, monthly maintenance, isn't it?
Is that something we pump, or we contract it up? So, potentially, it's less work for our staff.
But those pine trees really look good, though.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I wonder why. We're getting fertilizer and water at the same time, right?
Just saying.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions, I would, let's see, make sure I got the right one. I would make a motion to approve contract number CS twenty-two-three-zero-zero-one with Apache Underground for the Globe Community Center Sewer, Sewer Line Replacement Project with funds to come from account fifty-one-dash-eighty-dash-five-two-two-zero-zero Waste Water Capital Outlay Construction with possible reimbursement from WIPA. Second.
Motion second for item six C. Any further discussion?
I would just, uh, remind us that it's possible reimbursement. Jerry's got to work for it.
Yeah, so, so I will, uh, I will apply for that. I don't, I don't see an issue, but, but you never can say never.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any opposing? Motion passed.
Yeah, if only we knew somebody on the WIPA board.
Item D, consideration and possible approval of change order number one to contract number CS dash two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-three-one with Superior Tank Solutions for the Hagan Tank Exterior Coating Project in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded out of account number five-zero-dash-eight-zero-dash-five-two-two-zero-zero Water Capital Outlay Construction. Jerry.
So, um, I think these pictures, I don't know if any of these were... Oh, yeah, they was just using the wrong one.
There it is.
Okay, so, uh, Hagan Tanks, this is, uh, Tanks, uh... These are Tanks, uh, two and three. And, uh, Tank One is, uh, the five-hundred-thousand-gallon tank that's off the side there. But, uh, basically, uh, these, these tanks were seeping, and we were getting some leakages. And so we, uh, went into contract with Superior Tanks to, uh, make sure that these were, uh, cleaned and, um, and, and coated, and to eliminate the leakages there. We, uh, we got into the tanks, we weren't going to do anything to, uh, the roof area, because it looked really good. But once we got in there and got, got, uh, Tank Two drained and looked at it, there were loose bolts, there were places that needed to be blasted. So, Tank, uh, Change Order Number One for seventy-five-hundred dollars is for us to go in and, um, take care of, uh, all the loose bolts and replace the ones that were missing and, and, uh, and recoat the areas. Uh, we did not know that until we got inside the tank. But that's what Change Order One is for, seventy-five-hundred dollars.
Questions, comment?
Mr. Mayor, Fernando and I took the tour, uh, the other day, and, uh, those are the biggest tanks I've ever seen. You can have batting practice in there, it's, that's the size of those things. And it's, at the time, it was almost completely done. They were adjusting the bolts on the ceiling with an inspector right behind the worker. And, uh, it should serve well for years to come. It's quite a...
It's, they did a good job on it. Took them a while, but they did a good job.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of...
What did you do with the water?
Uh, we pumped from one, we pumped from one tank to the other. So, we could, uh, we didn't want to just dump it, so we pumped, we have a pump that's just, uh, that designated just for our tanks. And we, you know, it's a clean pump that we go from one to the other. And, um, and so we, we draw the tanks down on the system, and then we pump to one pool.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jerry, um, I mean, these are, um, these have another forty years of life, is what I thought I heard.
Um, yeah, uh, minimum of thirty, minimum of thirty.
With the maintenance and everything.
I'll probably be retired by then.
Yeah. But the, um, the other, the, in talking to the, the Superior Tank, the replacement costs on these tanks are going way, way up. And, and so the value to the city is just that much more. Um, and so it's a good investment to, to do this right. And, and we're going to finish it off by putting a good coat of quality paint and whatever it does. I don't know the technical, but to get them clean and looking good.
I, I'm not quite sure how to use this thing, because these aren't working though. Oh, okay, so this, this is the inside, this is where they've actually coated. There's a couple more here, Danny, too.
Will that be the color on the outside?
Um, yeah, it'd be, uh, why are you asking me that? I don't even know what color that is.
You didn't get paint chips and, you know...
So, it's going to be desert tan, sand. Okay, so he's just doing that to embarrass me.
Not in the historical district, just so you know.
So, um, so go, go back to the one on the top. It, there you go. So, this is where we found all the loose bolts and stuff on this change order, so, um, this, this is actually Tank, uh, Three. And so, uh, this is one that they, that I think you guys toured the other day. And, uh, but we had, uh, for the price of seventy-five-hundred, they did this Tank Two.
Ready? Yeah, I mean, that picture right there is beautiful. I mean, that, that's like a picturesque painting right there. I can, um, you know... It wasn't, wasn't long ago when, when we learned that, you know, this tank needed some, uh, some TLC and, um... As you know, I got pretty excited about the condition. And to see the effort to bring this tank back to its, uh, a condition that, that is going to secure the, uh, the reliability of our drinking water is, is the utmost important thing to do. And, um, I applaud you for getting on it and taking care of this, and, uh... You know, these are, these are near and dear to me, these kinds of projects. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I wouldn't be surprised if these pictures found their way into the two thousand twenty-three, uh, Public Works Calendar gift for Christmas.
Well, and, you know, now that...
Yeah, I'm still trying to get eleven more people to model for it.
After all this, um, you know, we're going to be able to use its full capacity now, yeah.
Yeah, so, so thi- this, uh, before, we could only fill about, uh, two-thirds of the way up because of the gaskets that were so bad. And now that we've in, uh, did the interior lining on this, uh, we could not only put a million gallons, we could put a million and a half gallons, I mean, twenty-one. That makes a big difference.
Water is gold.
I move to approve item six D.
Motion second for approval of item six D. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Item E, consideration and possible approval of Change Order Number Two to Contract Number CS dash two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-three-one with Superior Tank Solutions for the Hagan Tank Coating Project in the negative amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred to be funded back to the account number five-zero-dash-eight-zero-dash-five-two-two-zero-zero Water Capital Outlay Construction. Actually putting money back?
You like the last change order, how about this one?
First change order.
So, uh, yeah, so you don't get too many of these, but, but basically, we hired a, uh, a coating expert to inspect this. And, uh, we blasted, uh, Tank Two, and which was just what we planned on doing, was blasting it down to metal and coating it back up. Well, we got into Tank Three, and we found that it was powder-coated underneath. And it was kind of stupid to blast all the powder coating off, since that was a better, um, uh, coating than what we were putting back on. So, his suggestion was to blast, well, spot, spot blast it in the areas that were bad, uh, and just, uh, uh, brush sa- brush blast, uh, the powder coating, so we had something to adhere to. And, um, and we, we come back to, uh, Superior on that, and they gave us a credit of twenty-nine thousand, uh, five hundred dollars. And that will be applied to, back to the contingency amount. And we still have another change order coming at you, because, uh, the next change order you'll see in a future council meeting will be to paint the outside of the tanks. So, um, and, and this will give us enough money to do that, so, uh... If this is, you know, I wish every time I stood up here, I was giving money back.
Do we need to adjust the budget?
You know, fortunately, fortunately for John, this is enterprise money.
Good job, John. Everything's okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Change Order Number Two to Contract Number CS twenty-two-one-dash-zero-zero-three-one with Superior Tank Solutions for the Hagan Tank Coating Project in the negative amount of twenty thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded back to account number five-zero-dash-eight-zero-dash-five-two-two-zero-zero Water Capital Outlay Construction.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item six E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, I didn't know it was going to get passed, you guys were so shocked.
Boy, we're getting money back.
Late agenda items? We have none? Late agenda items?
We got a text, but we're... I'm sorry?
Late agenda items?
We have no late agenda items.
Second call to the public, do we have anybody online, or?
And let me take a quick look. Um, let's see, I, I do have an email here. So, let me, we do have one, uh, comment that's been emailed to us. Um, this is from Sherri Rice, and it says, uh, "Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, um, will you please switch the American flag and the Arizona flag behind you? The U.S. flag code states that the American flag should be presented to the right of the speaker area of the dius podium. Thank you, Sherri Rice." We will, we will jump on that. But we, we cannot comment.
Thank you, Sherri. Any others?
Uh, that was it.
Scheduling the meetings?
Oh, we, we do want to, um, uh, do that H-PAC City Council, uh, kind of joint meeting. Um, we could do that in the, I think that would be, might be an appropriate daytime meeting. I don't know if council's pleasure is to do that prior to Christmas, or, 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 or in January sometime. Um, and, and so it's to your discussion of when you, what, uh, what time of the day you'd like to do it. And I know, uh, Vice Mayor has conflicts, uh, and, um, and then when on the calendar. Uh, I will, I will let you know that we have, um, two more meetings in, uh, November, and then we're looking, um, at one meeting in December. And, and hopefully, we can get everything together, so we won't need a second meeting in December. Uh, give us more time for the holidays, so...
Maybe send out some dates, so we can, give an email and see what we can do.
Well, you, do you want to look for, um, prior to Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas? Or wait until after January?
I'd probably wait until after January.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. All right, that sounds good.
We lose our life. November, December, twenty-two.
We're running along here. Okay, so, and that's the only, uh, scheduling meetings, Mr. Mayor.
And just one comment, we're going to keep our council meeting, uh, in November, that's the same day as Election Day. We, we, we're, there's no conflict there, we're okay.
No, we're, yeah, we're fine, uh, because there is no action being taken on behalf of the, of the city. We have nothing on the ballot. Um, but we, we do want to make that a, um, a briefer meeting than this meeting, um, so people can get back and, and watch the results. Um, so, but we, we did not, and I, I mean, council has the opportunity right now. If you'd like to reschedule that to the Wednesday. But I, I think we can just, I think, I, I think we can, I, I think we can keep it a very light agenda, you...
Get done by eight o'clock, we're okay.
I, I...
You don't count the early ballots.
Right, the polls close at seven. And so, so I don't think we're going to miss too much excitement. Okay. Make note.
Is that okay, Janelle?
Yep. Work group report to council, any reports, any?
And I believe we did have two on there. And so we did, um, I'm trying to remember that we, the Quality of Life Work Group was, was there.
We talked about the, the easement that we just approved tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the, um, looking at the Quality of Life, uh, there's a discussion about bed tax organization. And I think this one is, is, is important. Um, the, the feeling of the work group was that we had had a conversation about the, the merits of, uh... We, we enjoyed the presentation by Downtown Association with Molly being here. The merits of other groups coming forward. I had asked if, when we go to request the money, bring that on the agenda, if we would like have the members of council do a little update. But the work group recommended unanimously, you, you know, the three of them, like the idea of asking someone from the organization to come to do a five-to-ten-minute presentation. To facilitate that, we would take it off of consent, put it on the regular agenda, and just hear from someone representing there, so we can get a, a little briefing. They're coming, they're requesting funding. Um, and I, I think to, to make an appearance and, and stand for some, a, a quick report and some questions is what the direction from the work group. But I would love to hear if there's any, if that, if the rest of council agrees with that. And that would be a...
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. So, so as we bring these next reports forward, we will put them on the regular agenda and, and, um, bring them forward when we have a, a presenter lined up. Um, not, not requiring a PowerPoint, just having them come to, to speak, yeah. Yep. But it just, uh, I think, I think it's just good to have if you're, you're, you know, to, to, if there are any questions, let's hear it straight from the people who are in the know. So, the, the other thing, let's see, property lines, um, uh, we talked about the youth club, um, business permits and, and building permits and, and customer service, uh, efforts we have, uh, going on. Um, I don't think there's anything that, if there's anything that anybody who was not here would like to know more about, you could ask the members who did attend, or you can come to, to me, and we can talk about later. you could ask the members who did attend, or you can come to, to me and we can talk about later on those topics. And I think, I think we're all good. We do.
Consideration of future agenda items?
Oh, I, I will.
They have been. Consideration of future agenda items, anybody have any? We do have an E-session, so I'll, you, uh, call for a motion to go into E-session.
Second.
Motion second to go into E-session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, and to those people watching in, in the audience, um, at, at this point, we'll go into E-session, we'll have to clear the room. But when we come back to get out of E-session and then adjourn to exit, there'll be no additional action taken by council in the public forum. Uh, so we'll take a break and clear the room and then come back, uh, end the broadcast and then come back and, and cover, um, our one E-session item.
Thank you for attending our meeting.
You all.
Thank you.